Okay, we're recording.
All right, this is Ken Stevens, Chairman Inland Wetlands Commission, Bethel, Connecticut. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Bethel Inland Wetlands Commission for September the 13th to order. We should start with introducing the team again. I'm Ken Stevens, Chairman. We have Greg Johnson next.
Greg Johnston, Commissioner.
Pat Sell, Commissioner.
Pat Paraford.
Pat Paraford, Secretary.
David.
Dave McCollum, inland wetlands agent.
Mary.
Mary Churchill, Recording Secretary.
Thank you all. The agenda appears to be light. David, do we want to skip right down to new business?
Sure, Ken. Works for me.
All right, you're on. Stony Hill Road number seven, declaratory ruling.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I am kind of broaching this, if you will, not on behalf of the applicant, per se, but just as kind of a heads up. The, the team, the, the development or applicant team, if you will, for Stony Hill Road number seven, AKA Target, is going to be coming to us at our next regularly scheduled meeting on September 27th to, to show us materials pertaining to a 13,000 square foot addition that's being proposed to the Target building itself. I included in the Google Drive for this meeting.
Details are there, so.
What's that?
Details are there, thank you.
Right, right, yeah, you're welcome. The, the materials that you guys would, would normally see for a full-blown inland wetlands application, it, this material had been presented to you guys more or less just for us to have everything, or ducks in a row, if you will, so that you guys can get an idea for, for what's going to be discussed formally, I guess, at our, at our meeting on the 27th. I'll, I'll dive into it here to not get too specific. The site plan, there we go. Very good. I'm going to be pulling up on my screen here. If you guys have any issues seeing it, let me know. This should work. Nope, I just want to share one screen.
So far, we see you.
Okay.
And you're frozen to boot.
Oh, boy.
Do you want me to try to go to the drive and pull it up?
Uh, hang on, Ken. Can you still see me?
Yes.
Seem to be having some technical, yeah, technical difficulties on my end. Shoot. Sorry about this, everybody. I don't know why this is doing this.
That's right, you're cutting into Ken's half an hour time limit, so.
Which one, which document do you want to look at, David?
Uh, I, I'm trying to pull up the site plan, application plans. I don't know if you, can you guys still hear me?
Yep, I'm in the, I'm in the, I'm in the Google Drive, so which document, what's the title of the doc?
Oh, I, I'm sorry. Uh, it is, it is Stony Hill, 7 Stony Hill Road, obviously, and then you're going to go to Target Bethel
I got it. Let me just see if I can share now. Your Google Drive doesn't like us tonight because it's just circling and circling.
Um, yeah, I, I don't know why it's doing that.
There it is. Now, how do I share my screen?
Um, well, as co-hosts, Ken, there should be a, okay, it's my internet connection. I'm sorry. Uh, there should be a, a green icon at the bottom of the Zoom application that says Share Screen.
Yeah, that would be nice if it was there.
I see it on mine, Share Screen.
Oh, hang on here. No, okay. It should be up, Ken, can you see it? You have to bring your cursor down to the bottom of the screen.
There you are. Desktop. Share. Well, I hit Share.
What was, what was the name of the document, T1528?
No, 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 it's 195737146.
You guys see my screen at all?
No, we don't.
No.
Here, I'm, I'm going to try to, I'm going to try again, Ken.
All right.
Okay. All right, hang on, everybody. I'm hopeful I don't lose you. No, I don't really need that. Uh, yes, there we go. That may help.
I just tried.
Oh, I see it.
Pat's got it, okay.
There you go, good, thanks, Pat.
Just so you know, I got a one gig drive from Comcast, so.
Okay, uh, Pat, if, if it's not too much, I'm going to try to request a remote control of your screen, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Okay, you just have to grant it to me.
Are we supposed to be seeing all of this stuff now and not just the map?
Oh, there we go. Uh, hang on here.
There we go.
Okay, this is very interesting. I've never done this before.
Okay, I could see, I could see pretty good.
Looks good.
Okay. Uh, so this is the target site itself. This is Stony Hill Road up here where there are changes with Exit 8, and then there's that stoplight and the driveway that you take up to the current Target Building itself. The work that they're proposing to be doing is here on, if you're looking at the front side of the building to its left, where that current parking area is there now. I'll show you here what exactly the work entails. Like I had said, it's a 13,000 square foot addition, but the plans, I believe, can give you better context for what that means. Okay, so this is, oh, it's hard, I'm trying to work on a Zoom dot screen. I'm, I'm sorry. Okay. So this is, uh, my goodness, why is this doing this? So this is a, a kind of a site plan view of the area view that we just looked at, with the driveway and the Target building that's there now, the parking area. The next page. Okay, that kind of goes into the islands that are there. Here we go. Okay. So, so this 13,000 square foot addition, it's compared to the building that's there now. It's relatively small. It's within an area that's already been disturbed on the site, i.e. that parking area that I just mentioned. Where the inland wetlands commission comes into play is over here where my cursor is on this side of the screen. There is a wetland, a, a water course that is upland, uphill, if you will, of the project site. So in other words, this is actually lower than where this is up here. So there's another document that's in the materials that, um,
There will be no additional disturbance to that area, correct?
Correct, correct. There, there are no direct impacts proposed to where my cursor is. And, and there are no proposed additional encroachments in terms of upland review area that's disturbed as part of the work that's proposed. In other words, it's, it's all contained to area that's already in, that's been impacted. And the applicant notes that, that this was all part of, and then the wetlands commission application that this board previously approved. I, I don't know how many years ago that was.
Long time.
Okay, so the, the long story short of it is, is that the report that is, is among the materials that I, I gave to you guys in the Google Drive, it, it describes this in more detail, but it, in short, says that none of what's being proposed here is going to adversely impact this, with it being, with this being upstream of the, of the, the project site and it also being up gradients. That's, that's why the applicant's confident that you guys can process this application, if you will, if you will, as a declaratory ruling. We're, we're kind of a, a small cog in what is otherwise a more thorough application, not to get into what planning and zoning really has to do with this.
It'll be theirs, their dog to walk.
Right, right, really. We're, we're just kind of more for, of formality, or at least I, I, I would think in, in this instance, that the commission should be comfortable with, with processing this application, these materials in a, in a declaratory ruling fashion. You guys have any questions for me?
I just have a comment, if I may.
Go for it.
I looked at the materials you sent, and I have no concerns over what they're doing here from an inland wetlands perspective.
Okay.
Pat, you had a question?
Uh, yeah, is, uh, do you know zoning's doing a public hearing?
Uh, I believe they are, yes.
I, I'm, what's that? I'm sorry.
I think it would be required.
Yeah, no, and then I'm fine. I mean, there's really no changes. I, the information was pretty straightforward, so.
Yeah, and whether or not the Planning and Zoning Commission has or does not have a, a, a public hearing, that really should be no bearing on, on how we process these materials.
Just interested, I don't know that.
Okay, okay.
I, I just know it was, if I recall correctly, it, it got a lot of public scrutiny when this was in front of the town last time.
Right.
The whole building, not this little piece. I, I don't expect anyone would even show up for a public hearing on this.
Right, uh, and just understand the, and if I, if I haven't made this clear already, the regulated upland review area for this, while I, I don't think I can, I can show it here with, with what's on my screen, at least from what I can see, it doesn't even come up to the front of the building here. It, it's only a small part of where they're proposing to do the work. That's actually within your URA. So, so if, if that doesn't add any comfort to, you know, you guys going with a declaratory ruling, you know, I can perhaps shed some more light on, on what it is that they've got going on out there, or what they're proposing to anyway.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Greg, did you have any questions?
Nah, no questions at all. It's, it's already been done what is done, so it's not really concerning us. It's more for zoning.
Right, right.
Pat Sell, any questions?
No, it looks like they're still going to have parking on that side, right? That's not, all the parking's not going away on that side of the building? Is that what the, it shows?
Yeah, Pat Sell, that, that's correct. They're, they're not taking away, well, let me rephrase that. They're reducing the amount of parking that's on this side of the building, but they're not taking it away. They're, they're, they're just altering the layout for the parking spaces and, and you know, possibly the number. I, I don't know how that works out, per se, but that really isn't of any concern to us.
Yeah, just curious. Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't believe the impervious material will change significantly, so I don't think.
Okay. All right, Pat.
Do we need to make a motion to allow you to approve this via declaratory ruling?
Well, not, not tonight. What, what I would suggest, Ken, is that you, we have a consensus for me to draft, you know, what, what is otherwise a, a border plate declaratory ruling and the language that's normally found within for you guys to vote on it your next meeting, which is the 27th.
I think, I think we have a consensus, David. Everybody's in agreement.
Dave, when does the zoning board meet? Tomorrow night, you said?
Planning and zoning is, is means tomorrow night. I, I think the, there are two components to their application. One, I think, is for a text amendment, and another is for the addition itself.
If, if, I, I don't know if it speeds it up for the applicant, but I'm fine you handling this. I don't know if we can make that decision tonight. If it would speed it up with the zoning board, I don't know the whole timeline stuff, but it's pretty straightforward.
Yep, I, I appreciate your, your thoughtfulness, Pat. Uh, their, their, their date for us that they were hoping for was for September 28th, for the Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting at the end of this month, that we have our piece done. And I, I'm, I'm confident that with us meeting on the 27th, that shouldn't be an issue.
All right, good. Thank you.
Okay, so, so I, I need verbal yeses from everybody that I can go forth with a declarative. I, I, I know Ken, but I, Greg and, and Pat and, well, both Pats, actually. Are we okay for a declaratory ruling?
This is Greg. I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Pat. No, I'm okay with, I'm okay.
For it, it's okay.
Okay, very good. Thanks, guys.
So David, this is a good time for a point of clarity.
Yeah.
And I had sent you an email on this, and Pat, please don't take personal offense to what I'm about to say, Pat Sell. Unless an alternate is seated, state regulations and town ordinances do not allow the alternate to vote. They're allowed to participate and ask questions. And we had a situation at our last meeting where an alternate's vote was recorded and that alternate had not been seated. So unless the alternate is seated by the chairman, and I hate to sound like a little pain in the ass, but I am, then those votes should not be taken from the alternate, nor should they be recorded.
Got it. Absolutely.
Yep, I understand.
Um, but let's, let's just reaffirm here real, real quick. This is just a consensus, it's not meant to be a vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Just trying to be clear.
Yep, gotcha, good. I'm riding page with you. So I, I guess with, with our Stony Hill Road discussion out of the way, can we move on to the next item of business?
All right, so the meeting minutes, and David, I asked for some guidance from you based on the statement I just made. Do we need to amend the minutes from the meeting of June 28th to accurately reflect the voting positions that were recorded?
Um, if, if, if Pat Sell was not, was not seated, and if we did not need her seat to pass the motion, then I would say, yes, we should have the minutes amended to reflect that.
Election, no alternates were seated for that.
Okay, but, and, and we had a quorum to make, uh, without alternates to be able to pass the motion?
Well, let's see who was in attendance.
Okay.
That's typically on our minutes.
We have one, two, three, four, five. Okay, yes.
Where can I, I'm sorry, I don't see that on the minutes.
So, so it would be at the top of the minutes, Ken, commission members present?
Yeah, no, that's where it normally is. When I printed, it's not there.
Oh, that's interesting here. I.
You know what? You know why it's not there? Because I'm looking at the agenda for tonight, and not the minutes for last time.
Oh, got it, okay.
So we're good. So, Mary, would you just amend that, those minutes from the last meeting, and then we can approve them at the next meeting?
Sure.
Removing the alternate's vote, and I think that was Pat Sell was, has a vote on their recording.
Okay, and, and Mary, I'll, I'll pull up the recording so we can go through that and, and see who would be appro, would be an appropriate number to give us the seconds that we need.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. The invoice for Northeast Conservation District. I had reviewed that invoice, and there was a line item or a part of a grouping of a line item on the invoice that I wasn't familiar with. And I asked David to go back to them and ask them for line item detail. David sent an email. There was an item on there for commission education. And I know I'm not as good at remembering things as, remembering things as I used to be, but I don't remember any of us attending education presented by Northwest Conservation District. So we're waiting for a reply from them. So I would table the approval of this invoice until our meeting later this month.
Well, if, if I may, Ken, um, I, I was not able to upload the response that I received in the Google Drive just with it being within the 24 hours to our meeting tonight.
That's probably why I didn't know we had a response.
Right, I, and, and this, and this had come pursuant to your, your phone call to the office here today. I, I apologize. I should have let you know that.
That wasn't the reason for my call, but.
Right, right.
Disgust anyway.
Right, um, so I, I'm, um, let me see here, without trying to butcher anyone's names. There was a response that I have received from, from Karen Nelson, who is the program administrator for the Northwest Conservation District, and she gave me an annual report that, that is, uh, you know, for land use commissions such as yourselves for, for what their services entail and why you guys receive this invoice, if you will. Let me, let me just put one thing out there, just to be upfront. I, I know this is labeled as, as an invoice, if you will, but it's, it's really for all intents and purposes, it's meant to function as a contribution. We are not the only town that, that contributes to the Northwest Conservation District, and, and I would assume that all the towns that do contribute the same amount, and it's for the same purposes. In other words, if, if you were to look at, I, I forget how many it is, that, that at least dozen, if not two dozen other towns within our district that also get this invoice, it would be for the exact same things, but, but to not, you know, hash into this too much. I'm going to try to pull it up on my screen if Zoom will cooperate with me.
If it's, if it's, and again, I hate to be a pain, but if it is indeed a contribution being made by the town, then it should be recorded as such and not received and paid as an invoice.
Right, well, um, to, to not really get into the specifics of, of this too much. Some years ago, this, this contribution has come out of the general budget. And, um, you, you know, it, it, for what I have, what I understand, you know, us having this be an item that's addressed through the commission, it, it guarantees, or, or in essence, it, it, it gives a, a better likelihood that we are going to follow through with giving this contribution annually. For, for most of the members here, you guys should recall, this is an invoice that we've paid last year, and for at least every year that I've been serving as your inland wetlands agent, that's.
Shame on me. We're not having read it more closely in the past, possibly, but I don't recall ever having an item on there for education.
Right, okay.
And I don't, we don't need to debate it here. We can take it to the controller if we need to. If it's not an invoice, I'm not approving it as the commission to pay it as an invoice.
And they, did they even have classes last year for anyone to attend?
No, no, and, and that's part of what I was going to try to share on my screen with you guys, would read, that there, the difficulty was, you know, there were no in-person meetings anywhere. And, and you know, for, for the Northwest Conservation District to, to try to put anything together remotely, it, it wasn't, um, it wasn't a hurdle that, that, that they were ready to.
Way off point. The point is, they submitted an invoice to the town of Bethel, which we're being asked to approve for payment. If it's not an invoice, then it should not be presented as such. And if it is an invoice, it should be accurate and have appropriate line items for services rendered. So, we could take this offline if you'd like, David. I don't know that we need to waste everybody's time at this point. But I, for one, won't approve it for payment at this meeting, because I don't believe it's an accurate statement of the money's being requested.
Okay, can, can I, can I read what was given to me real quick?
Sure.
Okay, and, and this is just the educational aspect. There's a, there's a bunch of others. But the one for educational services, it reads, and I quote, "Northwest Conservation District provided many educational workshops on topics including LID, Low-Impact Development, and store water management, residential rain gardens, soil health, renewable energy options, and best agricultural management practices. These programs also support sustainable CT towns with their certification efforts. Because of in-person meeting restrictions, we offered online formats to safely continue our educational initiatives. The Connecticut Envirothon Program, hyperlink wwwctenvirothon.org, provides hands-on science for high school students through workshops and educational support. Participating schools take part in an annual Mayfield Day statewide competition. The winning team usually competes in the National Conservation Foundation competition. This year, the onset of COVID meant the cancellation of both the Connecticut Field Day competition and the NCF competition. CT Environment, Envirothon shifted to a virtual competition with NWCD staff taking the lead to create and conduct the June event addressing, quote, "water resources management, local control and local solutions," end quote. 12 teams participated in the virtual event with NWCD schools, Northwest Regional 7, with two teams placing first and second, and Housatonic Valley Regional placing third, end quote. You know, that, that, that's probably for another town, that, that, that's not specific to you guys, but that's not to say that their educational opportunities are, are, are limited to anybody. They're, they're encompassed for everybody.
I hate to interrupt you, but we were given an invoice for payment. We were not the recipient of the service quoted on the invoice. If the town of Bethel wants to pay the invoice or treat it as a donation, that's their call. That's not this commission's call. We didn't, we weren't the recipient of that service. I'm not comfortable approving payment. If you want to have them reissue it as a donation, that's a whole nother discussion, but it's, it's quoted here on our agenda as an invoice. And I believe the document says invoice on it.
It does.
And we're not the recipient of services.
Can it be reissued by them as a, it sounds to me like it's more a membership than, because we need a tenant, they need to have the classes, so, but is, is that a membership fee versus a participation fee?
It needs to be issued accurately for what the charges represent.
Okay. Okay, I, I'll, I'll go back to them and, and see, and, and see what we can do. You know, to, to possibly have this altered. I, I haven't had, I haven't been put in this position to have this discussion before. I, I'm not sure if.
I'm happy to have the discussion with them if you'd like, but you may not want me on that call.
No, it, 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 it really should be something that I, that I discuss with, with Karen Nelson up in the Northwest Conservation District. And if, and if I have any updates for you guys in the next week.
It's not, I'm not debating what they've done. I'm debating the representation in the invoice. If they educated Bethel school kids, all the better. And the kids participated, great.
Send that, send that bill to the Board of Ed.
Thank you very much, Greg.
Okay.
Let us know, let us know how you make out with that, David. And like I said, I'm available to chat if she, you'd like me to.
Okay, okay. We'll table it for the next meeting.
All right. Next item. Again, I'm going to be a pain here for a moment. We've had staff comments and reports. The first item has been on this agenda for over a year. We haven't discussed it in any detail. Are we ever going to discuss it, or should we remove it?
Oh, no, we're, I, I was going to get to it as, as the first item on our agenda. It's in the Google Drive for tonight under Business Items, Town of Bethel Planning Commission Science.
All righty, let's hear about it.
Uh, I, I would share my screen to show you, but it, you guys can take my word for it, because unfortunately my share of my screen isn't working for some reason, but it's there. It, it says Planning Commission Science, but it's really for any land use commission, the, thus, it's, it's a lawn sign essentially, and it's so border plate, it's meant to be for zoning board of appeals, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and us. All you have to do is you put in the date and the time that the public hearing starts, and there's the email. and there's the email address and the phone number on the bottom. The intent is, you would put this out at a subject property where a public hearing, um, i- is pertaining to, and, you know, we get the calls rights to the office, or we get the emails right to the office. Hey, what's this about? Can we get more information?
Excellent.
Or i- i- it goes right, uh, or, you know, we, we advise people, there's gonna be a Google Drive posted with all the documents. Um, the, the intent is, you know, when we go through with our first public hearing, I, I imagine we'll start using these.
So, should we, David, do we have to change anything on the application to advise the applicant that we will be posting a sign on their property and gain their permission to do so?
Um, no, that, because that's, that's already implied, Ken, um, that, that we have the, the ability to access, and, you know, um, how, how do I say this?
Because you, you may or may not be aware, there is an ordinance in Bethel against yard signs, except at election time, so we may wanna look at that before we-
Right, the, I, I think the, the intent of those yard signs is, is to solicit services or, or for the purpose of advertising, uh, in this-
Clear, but I rather doubt it being-
I, I, I say, I think that ordinances isn't, and I'm no expert, but isn't that on town land?
The, that's, that's also-
Public signs on town lands, not on private. And Dave, and I think everyone knows, I've pushed for these signs for a while now, it's just a great way for public to get information, but, um, you would not be putting them out correctly, applicant puts them out when they understand when they get a public hearing, they would put them on their lawn.
Right, that, I, I believe that, that's the intent, you know, ob- obviously, we, we would inspect to see where they put it, to make sure it's, it's conspicuous and, and can be seen by passersby, so that they know that there's a public hearing going on.
And David, just being a guy who writes contracts for a living, if I came to the town and made an application to the Inland Wetlands Commission, and you handed me that sign and told me to put it on my lawn, and, or on my property that was the subject of the application, and nowhere in that application did it advise me of such and ask for my agreement, I wouldn't put the sign on my property. Just food for thought, because we all know how the residents of any town are when it comes to being told what to do.
Right, right, uh, you, and, and, you know, that's, of, of course, I, I, it would be remiss for us to not mention that the commission ultimately decides whether or not an application goes to a public hearing or not. So, they're not off the, they're not off the bat, you know, going to know whether or not this is a site plan review or a public hearing, and I think it would be unfair to, uh, you know, put this out there to imply that, you know, you, you'd have to have this sign placed as, as part of an application.
I'll send you an email, I'm gonna recommend we put one line item in the application that says, "In the event that your application requires a public hearing, you'll be obligated to post the sign on your property advising the residents of Bethel of such hearing."
Yep.
For how long? For, will you put a timeline on there?
Yep.
It's my next question.
Yeah, because, because I, I, I would imagine that, that this, uh, that this sign would, would coincide with how a, a public notice works, in other words, it, it has to be posted X number of days before a public hearing starts and has to say, and has to stay, um, up, if you will, for X number of days before the public hearing. Or at least when it commences, for that matter.
Right.
Good news, I'm glad we got to end the job on that, Patrick, thank you for making that recommendation.
I, I've seen other towns, and it just, it helps drive awareness to people, I'm just tired of, oh, I didn't even know, because it was posted in the paper, and they didn't see it, so, you know what, if someone drives by and see it and doesn't, you know, can't find the time-
The best, the best part is, the people that complain will still complain.
Oh, yeah.
But, but, you just tell them, hey, you know, information's there, it's already there now, but they don't pay attention, so.
Yep.
Alright, next item, Inland Wetlands Commission Application Revisions.
Okay, this is something that I have brought to you guys before, but, um, Ken had made a good point that you guys had no idea what was being revised, I didn't make it conspicuous for everybody. Um, so what I have done, also in the Google Drive for tonight, um, is I have highlighted all of the revisions that I would like for you guys to make, or, or I, I would like you guys to be cognizant of for future applications that we receive. In fact, uh, you guys can kinda see this in practice already, with the application for Target, they use this form without the highlight and draft marks, obviously, for their submission. Uh, i- i- it gives, uh, for us here in the office, it, it gives me a better idea for when you guys accept an application, you know, in other words, what, what regular or special meeting you guys actually, um, you know, start the clock for the site plan review or for the public hearing. And there's the, um, subsequent review opening day item that kinda goes in hand with that. There's also another item that adds for declaratory rulings, because we didn't have that before. Uh, you know, for, for applicants who, uh, are concerned that they have to go through a, a full-blown application to, I guess, something on their property, even though they're doing it within a regulated open review area that's already been disturbed, and that there aren't any other adverse direct impacts to wetland areas proposed, it's good to know they have this option. Um, to, to kinda go through the, the rest of the items, i- it's, it's just embellishments, like, uh, getting an LOA with an application, in other words, if, if a council is representing somebody, we have to have an endorsement from the property owner that says, hey, I'm being represented by somebody, and I authorize them to submit an application for me. Um, the, the butters list, that, that's just kinda put in a different place, but it's more or less the same thing. Uh, an item, I think that's, that's of, of importance for you guys, is, um, item number six, where it originally said, just quote, "Describe any feasible and prudent alternatives considered, attach additional sheets if necessary," end quote. What I added to that was, "Feasible and/or prudent alternative required if environmental impact to regulated wetlands or water courses is proposed per Bethel in the Wetlands Regulations Appendix B, Item fourteen." So in other words, we, we've gotten, um, uh, responses or rebuttals, if you will, to applicants having to provide that, and I've had to inform them that, hey, in the regs, it clearly says that you have to do this here in this section, and, and I, and I want to try to make it upfront for people, so that way, you know, when you guys ask this question, or if, if you guys are still curious about it, you have that information upfront as part of the materials that you guys get. Um, another item, I guess, the, the last one that, um, I would say is, is now on the application form, is the attachment of a commission fee schedule. Uh, this is important, because w- when we decide whether or not an application goes to a site plan, um, review, or, or a public hearing, if there are, you know, concerns about significant impacts or the, the square footage is associated with such that have not been accounted for, for the items that have been paid, this keeps, helps me keep track of that. Um, I, I think it, it, it's important for you guys, um, because it, it helps the applicant identify to us the areas that they're going to be doing the work in, or the areas of the impact that are proposed, whether it's commercial or residential, whether it's in regulated open review area, whether it's in wetlands area, and whether or not there's items like mitigation components proposed. It, that, that's kind of where I, I, I'm hoping those, um, get pointed out to us. Um, you know, a- and, and I didn't want to go and make my revisions anymore than what I did with this, I'm hoping this is enough. Um, and if there's anything you guys want me to change with how I did this, just let me know.
Thank you.
Dave, I, I would just add, I, what Ken just said about the signs on the application.
Yep.
The one he was talking about, that's all, otherwise, I, I agree with it.
Yep, that, that would be added as a footnote, a- and just so you guys know, as the agreement reads at the end of applications, and, and this part I didn't change, just because I thought it was really good as it was, and I quote, "The applicant understands that this application is to be considered complete only when all information, documents, and fees have been submitted. The undersigned applicant hereby consents to allow access to the above property by members and staff within the Wetlands Commission or any other town agency at reasonable times, both and before, after any permit has been granted or denied by the commission for the purpose of evaluating the proposal, monitoring its implementation, or for the purpose of correcting any violation." Um, and of the well-endured water courses regulations for the town of Bethel. So that, that, that part, for us having the access, I, I, I think it's already implied, and I, and I would like to think that this public hearing, um, lawn sign, if you will, i- is kind of covered by that already. If you guys want me to add something that says, you know, something to the effect of, in go, in having, in the commission deterring that an application is subject to a public hearing, uh, lawn signs must be placed X, Y, and Z, so on and so forth, I can do that.
Please.
Okay.
We have a lot of debate.
Okay, okay, no problem.
Okay. Alrighty, commissioners, any comments, questions? I'm sorry, David, I thought you were finished.
No, not yet, I, I have, I have one more item that I have.
Not on the agenda.
Uh, IAA dash twenty twenty-one dash zero seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fleetwood Avenue twenty-one.
I thought that was covered under the application.
No, 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 it's, uh, it's an agent approval, I, I, I should have, uh, made that more explicit, I'm sorry. Um, but for, uh, that administrative- for that administrative agent approval, um, there is a residential property that, that borders, uh, Bethel Reservoir Brook. The owner had, uh, asked, uh, for permission, if you will, uh, to cut some saplings and some trees that were on the bank of Bethel Reservoir Brook that were in close proximity to their house. They have been concerned with the past, uh, weather events this year that we have been, uh, subjects to, that any of those trees on that, along that, uh, bank there would fall over and damage their house. Um, what they have proposed to do as part of the work, um, was not going to directly impact the water course or the banks in any way, um, as, uh, me- as a measure of reassurance, I had them place some biodegradable erosion control matting down along the bank, um, as a temporary measure, just to make sure that the soil stays stabilized, uh, while they were in there going to do the work. Um, I checked the site before they had gone in, and I saw the matting that they had put up. Um, I have yet to go out there, um, to see what the, um, finished work looks like, because it's, to my knowledge, they have yet to go out there. When they do go out there, I do expect to get advice of such. Uh, so, and, and with the work that was proposed as part of that, I, I, I felt comfortable, uh, processing it administratively. If you guys have any, um, questions about where this activity is, if you go on Fleetwood Avenue, um, going towards Danbury, um, with the mobile gas station on your left, in the Bank of America, or the former Bank of America on your right, you go down, uh, Fleetwood Avenue, it's the secondary on the left, and the bridge that you see right over it, and the address on your left, you can pretty much see where they did the work. It's, um, pretty obvious, and, and the area that they did it within is, is pretty small, so, that's why I did that, that way. Two other items of note, um, there are gonna be two enforcement matters, one, at least one of them, I think is gonna have some significant work that's involved with it. One of them is off of, I believe, East Swamp Brook, in the area of Taylor Road and, um, Hoyt Road, where it comes out towards, um, I, I, I think it's Walnut Tree Hill there, and then another is going to be, um, where, um, Old Dodge and Town Road, um, almost comes out to Newtown, they're almost at the Newtown line, uh, right where intersects with, um, Codfish Hill Road Extension. I'll have updates for you guys on those two properties at our next regular meeting on September twenty-seventh. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Questions from the commissioners, comments, concerns? Alright, Mary, welcome, good to have you here.
Oh, I apologize if, everybody, uh, this is our, uh, well, I say secretary in training, but she is our bona fide secretary now, Mary Churchill. Mary, this is the, well, this is what is now the, in the Wetlands Commission.
About to change drastically. Thank you all, do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good night, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.